It's in the packet, but it's not on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't want to forget to do that.
See that.
Right. Okay, seeing Quan, the chair opens up the Mashpee Planning Board meeting of Wednesday, August 16th, 2017, 7:00 PM here at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Just like to say hello to everybody, if you have the opportunity to come and address the board, please use that microphone, just to let everybody know that our meeting is being recorded and video graphed. And I would like to invite everybody to stand with me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance in order to start the meeting off. Hi, David.
Hello.
Hey, Dave.
So, let's all take a look at the August 2nd minutes. I see no corrections needed. I entertain a motion to accept as presented.
Let us accept the minutes as presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Absent.
Okay. Next item is a special permit. The applicant is Knockabout Bear Company LLC. The location is 13 Lake Ave, Mashpee, Accessors Map 27, Block 46. The request, the application for a special permit modification for the site plan change to Knockabout Bear Company project. The modification to, would include exterior siding and trim, retaining walls, patio and rain gardens. So what we need to do today is vote whether we need a public hearing on this.
No.
You know what I mean?
What's the changes? I gotta see what the changes before I...
Right. So Peter's here to bring us through that.
(inaudible) around, sorry.
And we might, you know, Tom's not here, so Charlie, Maria, and Maria and I have kind of worked this item out. Like, you know, you could see the writing on the agenda was a little different than how Tom probably...
Yeah. So was it big changes or...
I, there's a, I'll get the microphone here, so it's... I am Peter Murner with Knockabout. Thanks for having me tonight and for seeing everyone again. So today we're coming to you because we're getting, getting close to the end of the project on our end and have run into some issues with the property along the way that have kind of upped the costs of certain things along the way. Some termite damage, some asbestos, and then most recently we found an underground oil tank that was reserved in the fire department on that. And so, and all the proper permits have been done, the care have been done, the professional on that. So along the way, we've run into some more expenditures that we weren't expecting and we're looking to still get open in the short, short term, short term before the end of this year and are looking for the permission to phase out the site work that we have currently planned essentially. And I have, there's a document that I provided you guys that's a little bit more of a rundown that we can walk through. But essentially what we're looking to do is we want to be able to continue to maintain our ability to do the complete work that you guys have already approved, but ask for permission to open up before we put in the new big retaining walls, the patio out back, and some of those things we can go through. Essentially, get the building, the mechanicals of the building, the septic system, and get those items up to where they need to be so that we can open and operate, start generating some income, so that we can afford to pay for the next phase, which would be the large patio outside, the retaining walls, and some of those other site items we can walk through. And then also, one thing that I wanted to bring up today that we're working to get approval on historic from is just changing our siding from board and mat into cedar shingles, more traditional cake look, and then change the color that was going to be a cranberry sauce to a natural side, basically the shingles as they are naturally, and then change the trim, just the white.
That's better out there.
So, and we're going to go through that process, and we're going to be working with Tom when he gets back to schedule that with the historic commission as well. So it's two separate things. I'm just bringing them both up for you guys tonight, and we'll go through the process as needed for both.
So do you think we need to...
How long a schedule you looking for? I mean, you could do this, the rest of that in the spring, or you taking...
Well, we gotta earn the money first, so as soon as we can generate the income that we have to do the work, we would be able to do it. So that's really what we're trying to get open so that we can figure out...
I don't want this to be hanging like two, three years. I mean, you don't, you have any prediction how...
I wish I could give you an answer. I don't know how quickly, you know, how good business is going to go. It's going to become, you know, we have a nest egg to do this project, and essentially we've been eating into what we were going to be using for the site work to pay for these other things that have come up along the way. So essentially, right?
I don't think we need a public hearing, but I want us at a time limit, no more than a year.
Yep, when we, when we...
To finish the other things, you know, I mean, that's the only way out, too, not a public hearing, you know, I mean, that's what I...
I think when you come back to us, Dennis is going to look for your construction schedule.
Yeah, I guess what happens if...
I don't care if your business, I mean, you gotta finish this within a year.
Oh, I guess my question is what happens if we're unable to generate, say, the business flops and...
You go to the bank and see if you get a loan to finish it. I mean, I don't know what to tell you, but I mean, I can't let that, I mean, that was part of the whole deal. You gotta do all the thing. And I thought outside here he was going to generate money for you.
Yep. It also, it costs, you know, significant money to do the, the site work for because of the site, the site height difference.
By his beware, I mean, you know, you should have looked, I don't know why you didn't take test soils and stuff to see if there was anything in the ground or asbestos when you bought the building.
Well, I mean, the, the tank was hidden under a part of the building that was not disclosed. We did a 21E inspection with a professional organization, and they didn't find it. And we didn't find the tank until we actually removed part of the building, and it was discovered there.
All right, but I just gave my opinion. I don't know how anybody else is, I'm not going to argue, you know...
No, no argument at all, sir.
Right, but that's how I feel. I don't think we need...
I understand the implications if we're unable to, say, generate the income that's needed to, to do the work in a year. Our goal is that we can get open, so, you know, we want to get the septic system up to be compliant to where it needs to be based on what we need to do, get the utilities that are installed, be able to do the...
Let me just...
I've never, I've never done a special permit modification or a special permit with time limits in it, so maybe you have.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a special permit, so we can set what we want on this, you know. I think within a year, as long as you start doing, I know you have to build a retaining wall and whatever, but as long as, within that year, you at least start some of the other things. Not every year you come back and say, oh, we didn't make enough money, you know...
Yeah, my goal would be that we have a great outdoor space that's...
Well, that's what's, what's one of the things you sold us on with outdoor space, you know.
Well, you know, I, I guess my, my question is right now, we're, we're doing a ton of work to the building to make it look great.
Yep. I went by another day.
So there's, there's work going on outside, you know, we want to make the space that is outside look great, but it's, it's a hefty dollar to put, you know, the amount of work in there that we just don't have right now, and obviously I'd love to have it. So I guess, I, I want to know...
We can set a timeline, I still don't think you need a public hearing though.
Yeah, that's what we're deciding now, and I think that Dennis always gives a preview. And that's good, I think, for project proponents. We can't vote on those previews that Dennis is offering. But, yeah, I, I agree with Dennis. I don't think this, this requires a public hearing.
No, but in, in situations of time, performance bonds, you know, if you promise to do something and you say, here's my money, I'm going to do it on, by a year, that's, that's how you do it. And, and if you don't have it done, goodbye bond.
No, I understand.
And, and, but then you're saying, the reason why we're not doing it now is that the cash is short, so it's like a catch-22 almost, so like, you know, post a bond so you could delay it, and then, well, don't post a bond and just get it done.
Well, I know, I know that we can definitely get into whatever makes the most sense on that front. You know, our goal is that we can get an occupancy permit, because right now, our special permit has required us to basically follow through on our hardscape plan that we provided to the town before our building permit was issued, which includes, you know, the patio, the rain garden, the retaining walls. We still plan on doing the parking to come up to meet all the requirements set forth, and we can look at this if you guys want, set forth in there as far as making sure that the, the, the spaces are the correct size, there's the backups that you guys requested, so all those things are taken care of.
All right.
So...
Well, he come back in two weeks or three, you know, the end of the month.
So let's take a motion, is it a motion that we do not need a public hearing?
I make a motion, we do not need a public hearing for the, the changes to the Bear Company.
Before you vote on that, you might want to take a look at the special permit itself, just to be sure that these changes are okay. For example, I'm, I'm just looking on their submittal, page three for item 13, one of the conditions.
Yes, sir.
And it says that, "Prior to actual occupancy of the project, all project landscaping and fencing shown in the approved plans shall be properly installed, certified by the town planner or designee unless a landscape performance bond is provided." So how do you not require that to go forward unless you want to change the special permit in the terms of the special permit?
Right.
And it has nothing to do with whether it's a hearing or not. It seems to me that that is a, that's a term that doesn't have much to do with, say, the siding of the building, but it's a specific...
Thing, yeah.
I think it would have to do with, because you were going to serve alcohol outside, so it had to be enclosed for...
We're still going to fence the space off as needed to make sure we meet whatever the liquor requirements are going to be in that term when we go to get the liquor permitting. So we still want to put a fence there, it just won't have the patio itself. We're just basically keeping the existing outdoor space that's there right now, as far as having that perimeter, making sure that our food truck can be, the utilities for that can be installed, and then we can fence that off, so it's closed off space. If you haven't seen the space, if you haven't seen the site plan, which I have, the fencing goes up to the big banks, so we can do whatever's required, do whatever is set forth as needed on that front.
Charlie's right, though, it's still, the barn has nothing to do with, you have to have the barn up to, like...
They're seeking occupancy before this specific, specific item, and I don't know if there are other items, because I haven't read the entire special permit. But that particular one specifies that if they want actual occupancy before the landscaping and fencing is installed, they gotta provide a performance bond.
Right, which is what Rob...
We'd be open to providing a performance bond, figuring out how that would be requirements.
I think that would be a requirement. In that way, you would be in compliance with item 13, and you wouldn't have to worry about it.
Yeah, and that might note that was saying that we were requesting that, you know, you guys knew that we would be pushing, let me see here, pushing that aspect of the...
All right, before we keep on going, let's vote on the motion we got up that we need a public hearing, and then we can continue with this.
Next time.
If you vote, you...
That's it.
If you don't, and there are items in the special permit that you haven't looked at tonight, you're going to have to take it up again, aren't you, Dennis?
We're definitely going to see, we're going to, he's coming back on the, our next meeting.
Yep, we can come back and capture...
Just to do the whole discussion and, and discuss the...
We can do that now, though, right?
I would, I would think you'd want to hold off on the decision as to whether or not you needed a public hearing.
All right.
Until after you've really reviewed the special permit in its entirety, to be sure that there wasn't something else that...
Well, when I, when I consider this, every time a permit is modified and there's an application, we have to, we have to figure out, are we going to do a special permit, I mean, a public hearing or not?
Right.
So a, a public hearing has the abutters notice, and it's run for two weeks in the newspaper, and so what it does is it makes it so that the project proponent can't come back for a month, right? I look at this site and I see that there's no big neighborhood nearby, there's no big abutter that I think this, this modification, I don't think would impact an abutter negatively.
Well, the town is, I think the major...
So that's how I look at it. Then, if I don't see that there's an abutter or a development or business that's going to be negatively impacted by these changes, then I support no public hearing.
And, and he still has to get the barn...
It's still, it's still a public meeting. It's still on our agenda, and people will, we can still...
The permit needs, the permit needs modification.
Yep.
And to be recorded to reflect the fact that assessments were done. All I'm saying, Mary, and I don't know that it has anything to do with whether the public is affected by it, it's the terms of the special permit and the occupancy permit that he's looking for. And all I'm saying is that we see some of the conditions...
Well, this is not the language of the special permit modification.
I understand that, but you've, you've selected certain things that you want to delay until later, but I don't know, just looking at this, and I'm speaking for myself and the board, as to whether or not there are other items in the actual special permit document that might be triggered by this. That's all I'm saying.
You don't want to change the light, right?
We can definitely go through those at, at the meeting that we have, if it's on, two weeks from now or a month from now, whatever that happens to be.
And it may turn out that, that there's no change at all, that, that really requires a public hearing, but you don't know at this point.
I, I still don't think that we need a...
I don't think we need a public hearing.
But we're gonna, we're gonna, but the project proponent is going to come back to another meeting.
Correct.
When we'll be able to discuss these items, and I'll make sure that we have the special permit as is for us to consider.
So that'll be discussed line item by line item, or...
Yeah.
The whole objective is the public hearing or not.
Yeah.
What it really is, if it's a minor change or a major change.
Right.
This is a minor change, so it don't kick off the thing for a public hearing, it's not like, you know...
Tippel, if you were going to put another whole story on there, then I think that would be enough of a change to do a public hearing, but where it's the hardscape...
Let me ask Charlie, when he gets a barn, is there a time limit on that, or is that born?
Usually there is.
Okay.
That it's not just open-ended, that there is a specific time limit.
And not do, okay.
Yeah.
And he has to show us he has a barn.
Yeah, before I get the occupancy permit.
Yeah, but even before you want to change, you want, you know, get these things we've changed, and want us...
I mean, it looks like there's a...
I'm not going to give you, I don't want this two, three years, not if that's them. I might come like in a month and say, I got a barn now for my landscaping, because you know how much it's going to cost, and you get a barn for that much money, you know, so...
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if that's going to be changed in the special permit modification, fine with that, you know, I guess the way it reads here is that it's before the occupancy permit is issued, you know, and so I would work with Charlie or Tom or whoever the designated person is to make sure that we're clear about what's included with it.
Oh, all right, so you can't do business so you get the occupancy permit?
Correct, I can't say that.
That item is specific as to two things that have to be completed prior to occupancy, landscaping and fencing.
Yep.
So if you're not going to do that, the option is to provide the performance bond for the cost of that work to be done.
Right.
So like Dennis says, that needs to be in hand so that the board can vote on it, and then you could, under the terms of the permit, obtain your occupancy permit, assuming there is no other item in the special permit that would be similarly triggered.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so it says, prior to occupancy permit, occupancy of the project, all project landscaping and fencing as shown on the approved plan shall be installed and certified by a town planner, correct?
Yeah.
That's the way that I'm reading, so, so before we occupy the building essentially.
So Maria, maybe you should come over on the side. You can sit up here with us if you want. So we just want to make a note that all planning board members receive the existing special permit.
Okay.
In their packet for when this, we schedule this next meeting.
And there's something modification you want to include as well.
Right, your whole application, of course, but also...
You get, already granted us one modification, we made a...
Oh, oh, I see what he's saying. So there's the original special permit plus modification number one, this would be modification number two.
What, do you want to come back in a month, or two weeks?
Can you come back on, on the 6th?
Yeah, as soon as we can, because this is a kind of dating item for us.
And then we'll figure out...
So just put him on the schedule then, for the 6th.
And I don't think we need a time.
Big question.
Because it's not a public hearing.
No.
We don't need to set a time. So I've got a motion to not require a public hearing. It would be a public meeting, not a public hearing.
My motion is already out there, so...
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, September 6th, so do you think we should take this item before Mashpee Commons?
Mashpee Commons may be quick, I mean, oh, no, then I'm thinking the souls, I was talking to Tom for a minute there about the soul I'm going in. No, that's the whole project, huh? Yeah, let's have him come first.
Yeah, let's have you come first. Oh, that'll be good, because there might be a lot of people in the audience, and it will be like, good marketing strategy, Knockabout.
I'm thinking they'll still come for that soul of this, get it back, no, there.
Is there anything else that, beyond that meeting, that I should provide or be prepared to...
Me? I'd like to see your, like, if you're saying, I, I need more time to do this, I'd like to see some type of schedule, construction schedule to consider. Yes, there's that option for just having the bond, you know, and then you're done with that, but a construction schedule...
For the, for the work that I'm requesting be moved to phase two.
Yeah.
Do you, and we, we have an estimate of the bond value or the work that's going to be...
Yeah, I, I can, we can definitely put together something that, for the fencing and the landscaping.
Yeah.
And, right, and you might want to investigate how much that bond would be for you, so you can take that into consideration.
Yep. The way I read it, it's a, we'll all put together something that...
So should, does everybody want to give these back to Maria to hold on to, or do you guys want to read it?
I want to look at it.
You want it? All right. Okay, so bring it back to the next meeting.
We're looking at it.
That's good, well, I appreciate it, folks. I will see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have that also under new business, but I think we've covered it.
Yeah.
Right? Under new business, Cape Cod Commission utilization, utilizing Mashpee mitigation funds. Oh, there's a letter in here. So it's a letter, July 31st, 2017, to the Board of Direct, excuse me, Board of Direct, Board of Selectmen and our town manager. It's from Paul Nidzwicki, who's the executive director of the Cape Cod Commission. As you know, the Cape Cod Commission, through its review of DLI's development, developments of regional impact, can allow and or require applicants to mitigate some of the project's impacts through cash payments. So in the case of Mashpee, more than $1.4 million has been provided and $910,470 is currently available for various purposes. Isn't this just an FYI? So in the back, there's a breakdown of everything. So, all right, so they've released 1.4 million, and what's available is 910,000. They've encumbered almost 30,000 for our affordable housing feasibility study. I think this is just an FYI.
Right.
Does that sound right, David? I always thought these mitigation funds were kind of like restricted to use, but I guess not. Like, that 910,000 that's available, I thought that part of it could only be used for affordable housing, part of it could only be used for transportation, but...
I'm pretty sure that they're, they are earmarked based on, based on where the funds were obtained.
Came from, yeah.
I think that's how they earmarked.
So I don't know why this doesn't say that.
Call, I thought there was, I thought there was close to a million dollars with the housing, and then transportation had another sum, so I'm, I'm a little taken back by...
Do you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, let me ask some questions.
Yeah, because I, I always thought, yeah...
Well, the bottom, it says funds are reconvened for the following project, affordable housing.
Yeah, so we have some of that 910,000 put aside. Right, but sometimes I've seen these funds kind of in a different form. There's a part of money for affordable housing, part of money for open space, part of money for transportation.
What's it say here? Affordable housing, the 222,000 for Great Cove community.
Right, but I don't know, do you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't know why those aren't subtitled into affordable housing, transportation, open space. So maybe, David, next time you're there, you can...
Purpose portion of it, some of them are nitrogen loads, which I think are earmarked for the wastewater.
Right.
They say it's available, it must have already spent, right?
Earmarked.
Right. I don't know, David, that, why, next time you're there...
Yeah, thank you.
Ask Paul for us if that 910,000 is all for, is all undesignated, or is it designated in any way?
I think it's designated right here.
Ask him if we can use some of it for our trail over the Quashnet River.
That would be considered...
Open space, conservation!
A roadway expansion.
Yeah, roadway expansion.
Alternate, alternatives to automobile travel.
That's true. It's, it's from the high school to the commons.
Right, there's an alternative.
Public, it's a roadway to public...
Get that children safe.
To our public transportation.
Boy, you could take the whole project on that.
Oh, plus, plus more, yeah. All right, so that's good.
Okay, next.
October town meeting, okay. So when is town meeting? Is it the first Monday?
Mr. Chairman, when's that town meeting?
When's town meeting?
We just have that, we just got our question. I gotta move that.
Okay, so I'm working, all right, so I'm working with Maria to make sure that our...
Have time to...
That, that we schedule the public hearing before town meeting with enough public notice that we're required. So I'm meeting with Maria after this.
Oh, good.
To discuss that. So...
I was going to ask you, but figured you would know by now.
Yeah, we're not going to, and I think Tom might be, in fact, be back in time, but, and Maria's already started working on the legal notice for the newspaper, so when Tom gets back, hit the ground running.
Yeah.
So, yep. Mashpee Common zoning and plans, I have nothing.
No.
Just everybody read that OCID bylaw.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody wants to come in and see Tom beforehand.
I might have talked to him before, I might ask some questions.
Okay. Just if we do, make sure there's not three of us together.
Yeah.
Right, at the same time.
I, I come in, you know, don't, never be there.
All right. So I'll probably schedule some time with him, and I'll put it out if somebody wants, if one of you want to join me and Tom to go through it. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Old business, Chairman's Report, I don't think I have anything. Status of the Greenway Project. Charlie met with Catherine Millard and David Coharian, and was it with the engineering company, too?
Yes.
Okay, and how did that go?
They provided a proposal, showed us a projected plan, and just a general summary of what they suggested. The length of a proposed bridge was 55 feet long.
Yeah.
And in terms of the discussion, it was suggested that maybe with a relocation of some of the supporting portions of the bridge, that that main span could be reduced in length a little bit, and we talked about the possibility of more than one type of structure. For example, they gave a steel bridge, an aluminum bridge, a wooden bridge, and the composite For example, they gave a steel bridge, an aluminum bridge, a wooden bridge, and the composite bridge. The composite bridge, they don't like because they think the longevity of it isn't as much as the others. However, the composite bridge has the one factor about it that it's easy to construct because it comes in small pieces. If they were to bring in a bridge of 55 feet in length, you're gonna clear a lot of land in order to get construction equipment big enough size to handle that structure and get it swung into place. So it was left that they would take a look at the possibility of reducing the length from 55 to maybe 35 feet. All of their supporting piles and so forth were basically outside the wetlands line that they had established, but if, Rob, I don't know if you remember, when you were out there, when we looked at it, on the Westerly bank, it was very flat. And there was quite a distance between the flowing water and the wetlands line, but if they would've put in these screw anchor type piles, which are long lasting, you could put it partway in between the two with very limited amount of, I'll call it, disturbance to the wetland area. Plus, it would reduce the span, so they were gonna go back and look at that. One of the things we did determine was that of any structure that was built, the supporting structure should be the most permanent of anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you don't wanna have to go in there and rebuild a rotting set of piles.
Yeah.
You want something either concrete, or you want these screw anchors that can have a pile top on top, so you don't have to go back and fool around with that. So they were gonna go back and look at it again, there was no timetable that was given to them to come back with another proposal. Catherine, I think, wanted to give it some thought as to what should be done for more than one type of approach.
Okay.
Example, maybe use an aluminum bridge for the 35 feet and maybe wooden ramps or something for an approach on each end, which would be much less costly.
Okay.
So, it was just some suggestions were made, they took the suggestions into account and wanna go back and look at it.
Okay.
So, that's what was left.
Great.
Sounds like a pretty good meeting, I mean, they said, they're talking after...
Yeah, the costs of the construction were staggering. I mean, for the 55-foot bridge in a steel structure, they were looking at $150,000. And that didn't include some of the contingencies, such as the preparation of the site.
Oh, yeah.
For getting equipment in and out, mobilization, all that sort of thing.
The whole thing about the composite bridge was that we could get AmeriCorps to...
Yeah, and their thought was that it was subject to ultraviolet decomposition, and they really felt that some of the statements that these companies are making with respect to UV deterioration aren't perhaps as good as they claim.
Yeah.
And the reason they gave is that the composite structures just haven't been around long enough so that you get the benefit of longevity with them, whereas some of these others, of course, have been.
But wasn't that fiberglass, I think?
Yeah, yeah, it was. But it was a special material that, according to the one company I looked at, was not subject to UV deterioration. Not that it didn't deteriorate over time, but it simply wasn't. So whether or not they'll continue to look at that, I don't know.
Do they have some preliminary site drawings?
It was just a plan view, they provided the copy of the plan, which had been prepared by the surveyor that showed the wetlands boundaries, the existing stream, the old flume that was there, and a location for the proposed bridge and the approaches. But there was no design details, they haven't gotten that far at all, because I think it still needs to be determined how long that span needs to be. The one thing about shortening the span is that the structure itself can be a little lighter construction, and the cost of it is gonna be reduced. So the longer you span you go, the deeper the bridge has to be to support itself.
Yeah.
So by reducing the span, you reduce the, not only the length, but the weight, and also the lightness of, or the heaviness of the materials to make it up. So they were gonna take another look.
Okay. Thanks. Member, reports from members, design review.
Design review, we're very busy, we had a sign to review.
Yeah. People are mad about the signs though, too, I think.
Yeah, well, it was Laurenti, which is the new development on Great Neck Road South.
Oh, okay.
Couple new members, you said, huh?
Yeah.
Neat.
Oh, yeah, and we had two new members.
I like at Mashpee Common, that's nice, it kinda brands it all together.
Full committee now?
What?
Full committee now, all sorts.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have an architect.
Oh, good.
And we have a landscape architect.
A landscape architect.
Yeah, so we have, well, the room was full.
That was good, that was.
It was what, a little under seven feet?
Yeah, we looked at, you know, the sign and...
Oh, the, oh, okay, so the ground would be up in here, maybe? I would, I would say so, yeah, yeah. Probably, probably the ground would be somewhere here, just to cover them.
This is great for itself. It's not a big neon sign. The person that was given the presentation couldn't give the exact location.
No lights, no.
It was about, you know, it's going to be this, but there were no measurements.
Yeah, exactly where it's gonna be.
Yeah, and we didn't, we wanted to see the real color, which that's not the real color that it's going to be, and so they're gonna come back.
Oh, well.
But we pretty much...
I like the design. You guys like the general design of it?
Yeah, everybody, you know, we liked it, we just wanna see what the color is and where it's going to be.
Okay.
And got a big deal, but there's an awful lot of work, I don't know if you've gone up Great Neck Road South.
They did a lot of work out there going, it sounded pretty fab, like, the panels and stuff.
Yeah, when you see the amount of work that's being done, you know, take a look there.
Yeah.
So it's making a big change in the neighborhood.
It looks to me, though, it's closer to the street than I thought it was gonna be.
You know, my wife said that?
I thought it was gonna be like 50 feet, I thought, but it looks awful close.
It was supposed to be 35 feet.
Oh, is it?
And a tree buffer, right?
Yeah, but I think I drive by there saying, "I'm gonna stop and measure it, 'cause it's not what I thought," but you said 35 feet?
That's what it was.
That's what it looks more like to me, 30, 35 feet.
35 feet is on the plan.
'Cause there's a part of the building that sticks out.
Yes.
You know, like, right at the...
Well, that's where the arborists are gonna come in.
Well, I remember the design, but I always thought it was back, like, 20 feet, you know?
Yeah, the only...
I mean, I don't mind, it's gonna look nice when it's done.
In that area, the edge of the pavement is very close to the sideline of the layout.
Oh, all right.
So it may appear to be closer if you consider where it should be with respect to the layout of Great Neck Road South.
Yeah.
But they actually staked out the layout line.
And it's near the edge of the street, all right.
It's within, I would say, three to four feet of the edge of the pavement where their driveway is.
Oh.
It tapers in all the way down, so...
Yeah, and the only thing, you know, I don't have any disagreement with it, but the builder has it fenced, you know, has it fenced in, and the covering over the fence is showing like a picture of the building, and, you know, I did, didn't know if that...
That doesn't bother me, that's a reflection.
Yeah, I, you know, I didn't, I don't mind it, but it just seemed...
They put a lot of them up in the city, so that's the way the pictures are.
Like they're advertising.
Yeah, and then you're down on the hole and you're looking up, the people looking at you.
Well, you know what's good about those signs is it saves the town hall phone calls. That's, that, towns usually want them to put up a "coming soon" sign, otherwise you have a lot of people calling in.
Well, I got a, an email, and it was, I originally, I was on the board in Windchime.
Yeah.
And this person who was on the board before me, for some reason, the people in Laurenti got his name, sent him an email, they wanna meet with the people in Windchime to be friendly, you know, with them. So then he sent me an email, so then I sent the emails on to the board members, and they said they would like to meet with the people in Windchime.
Be good neighbors, then?
Yeah, to be good neighbors.
Any more on that design?
No, so that's the design review.
Community Preservation Committee, no meeting, Environmental Oversight Committee.
Ah, yes, we had a meeting. Well, there was a question on the town has stopped giving daily passes to John's Pond.
Yeah.
Oh.
And they're giving a weekly pass.
Oh, okay.
And the question that people had was, is the town losing money on this because there are less people, there are few people going now, like, to the pond, and it's become a big jet skiing thing. So there's a lot of jet skis on John's Pond, but that was, that was the question. So they're looking for physical help for the shellfish restoration.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and looking for any kind of help they can get.
What kind of help? Spreading the stuff around, counting, okay? And what do you do to help out with that?
Oh, I don't know.
All right, so I guess, if anybody's listening and they wanna help with the shellfish propagation, you have to call town hall and ask.
That's the project the tribe's participating in.
Probably, yeah.
I think you're giving us the deed, the babies.
Well, if people wanna volunteer, it's at the library at 4:00 on Thursday.
This Thursday, 4:00?
Yes, they're gonna have a meeting.
Okay, all right.
And on the Quashnet River restoration, they're sure that there's been money, the state has money, but they haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
So it's kinda delayed that.
They're gonna apply for funds?
Well, they, I guess they have, they're waiting, it's $49,000.
Okay.
And it just hasn't shown up yet. Oh, the, on the community restoration, the community garden restoration, the pickleball, the town doesn't want, yeah, the community gardens. So Mike still wants to kind of revitalize the gardens.
He does, okay.
He's gonna try to do something, and so we'll see if he's successful, I guess the...
Oh, he's a landscaper.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
And I guess...
Probably solve that.
From what he was saying, he was involved, he came from Boston, which I did, if you didn't recognize the...
What are you talking about?
And he was very active in the gardens. They had a lot of victory gardens and such, and whether it's in George's or...
Yeah.
Or in the Fenway.
Yeah, the Fenway, by, by the places.
And a few other places there, so he would like to see people more involved in it.
Okay.
Wasn't, I read something in the paper that the basic soil is unsuitable for gardening? There was some, some aspect?
That was my opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do I have to take that all out and put new soil?
No, they add, no, they add to it, they just add to it.
Oh, okay.
So the problem with garden...
How do you have a garden if you don't have decent soil?
So we're all on sand, right? So no matter what you put in, in the fall, a lot of it has gone away by the time you put, so it's constantly, you're constantly having to feed the soil.
Well, they're gonna have to work with the garden, because they've been abandoned.
Oh, they, they, I mean, the wild, the bees and the wasps and all the wonderful insects must be having a fun time, because it's all weeds and wildflowers, and it's going crazy over there.
Yeah.
It's like 4B high. And actually, that's usually pretty good for your soil once in a while, because deep-rooted weeds bring up trace nutrients up, and then you turn that in. But, yeah, it needs a little bit of work.
Yeah, and...
Maybe his company can sponsor it.
The John's Pond, Santua Pond, and the Mashpee River Woodlands, there was a fellow, and I missed his name, he's doing a video of the trails.
Oh, really? That's so neat.
That should be available soon, I think. And there's an Eagle Scout that wants to get a badge, so he must've worked on Santua Pond, and to volunteer to do any work around there.
That's awesome.
And that's about it, other than the John's Pond, that Diana Lund Memorial, and August 19, I think that was 1:00. And that was it.
Very good.
Historic District Commission.
No meeting.
MMR, David's not here. Anything from the Cape Cod Commission?
No, we haven't had another RPP meeting in a while. The other stuff are just DRIs, which I missed the last one, I had a scheduling conflict, but nothing to report. I did put together some of the meeting minutes I can share with you from the previous RPP subcommittee meetings.
That's great.
That I can provide to you to look over, and there's also copies of the presentation if you wanna look at and read those over. I could probably make them available, as long as they're good with it.
Yeah, no, those are all public meetings, so, yeah, that'd be great to get us all kind of up to speed. It's, it's not, the RPP is not an easy read.
Right.
Basically, the first half is the need, and then the second half is the plan, and you kind of end up, you feel like you're reading the same thing twice. Sometimes I skip to the second half.
Yes, I looked at previous ones, I'm like, huh?
Yeah, sometimes I go to the second part, which is kind of like their action plan, and just read that, because...
So far, they've just basically given, provided PowerPoint presentations on their more recent assessments and kind of directions in which they're leaning, but now that they're at the point where they're doing the analysis to develop the actual changes to the present RPP, which is supposed to present to us, I think, mid-September.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
That's good to know, yeah. I, you know, I would, I really think the commission should, you know, go around to each town to talk about it, or at least each region of the Cape.
From my understanding, they sound like they do attempt to go around to the towns, from my understanding. Who they actually talk to, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, I mean, it would be good, I know the Board of Selectmen are very interested in the RPP, it'd be good to have it done at the Board of Selectmen so that we can all go, you know? That's a big deal, okay, so now we have correspondence. This notices from the Town of Anstable about a public hearing on the limited land clearance with Sola Overlay District. Another Town of Anstable notice on the ZBA public hearings. Town of Thalmouth notice on open meeting and public hearing under zoning bylaws. ZBA is looking at affordable apartment program notices. Town of Sandwich, variance decision and special permit certification of approval. Thalmouth Planning Board, public hearing notice regarding proposed zoning amendment to prohibit all types of marijuana establishments. Okay, now we have discharge reports, and we just, we got one for June, for South Cape Village, which is quite an outlier, right, Joe?
Was there a decimal point missing, or, that's what I, I thought? The 41 versus 4.1?
Yes, it's 41.
41, okay, so, what are they doing there?
I don't, I don't know.
Not much.
You know, it just, it really, the number is just, well, I called Maria, well, I went to see her, she told me that I had sent an email, I thought there was a decimal point missing.
Yeah.
And turns out, there isn't.
So typically, what we do in this case is we have Tom call, that's, so if you could pass that on to Tom for him to call and follow up on that. And you would think if there was a system broken for some reason, they would actually state that, but I guess they don't.
Well, it's four times over the state limit, and it's...
Yeah.
I mean, summer activities, I mean, they do, they have several...
I mean, summer activities, I mean, they do, they have several restaurants there and, you know, obviously a lot more load on the system, I would say.
Well, and there's going to be a bigger load when they get home goods in there.
I thought it went down in the summer because they have a better flow and it's supposed to work better.
Well, yeah, because it has a better flow.
It could have been something broke then.
Yeah.
You know.
So...
It could be a wrong number though, too.
I guess they confirmed it with the lab, though.
No, yeah, I mean, the lab could have put, you know, because that's awfully odd.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Yes, the number's been verified.
Not with the lab.
Oh, not with the lab.
With three departments here.
Okay, so, and not with South Cape Village?
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah, I think Tom asked them to call them. He might have you. So that is something that in those phone calls would be good, is to just point out to South Cape Village that the number is so high and they should call the lab and make sure the quality control of that run was adequate.
They wanted that high, you know, I mean, there's something wrong, you know.
It'd be good to compare this report to the one for the previous month
Yeah.
and see what the other numbers are in the other categories to see if they're similarly...
Oh, I see, yeah.
Well, we have the, we have the other months on our...
But just one parameter.
Our agenda.
Yeah, just the one, just the night.
Yeah, it's just the one, the one number.
And that's one parameter they test for, Charles?
Right, but I'm talking about all these other...
Well, they test for a number of things, yeah.
I know, that's what I'm saying, because when you go into, next to the last page, well, page 2 or 4 of the RIN analytical lab, when they talk about BOD, total suspended solids, nitrite, nitrate, total solids and so forth, it'd be nice to be able to compare those numbers to, say, the previous month to see if all of a sudden there was a real spike in one of these other things.
Right.
Maybe it is a misreading. It seems crazy that it would go from what you've been seeing to 41.
Yeah, I would think one of these other factors would be complementary to, you know...
You would think so.
The TKN. All right, so unless it's...
I'm not convinced about it, Joan.
Is there a second?
Say a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Good job, everybody.